I have a real call, please.
Director Oskui.
Here.
Director Vasquez. Director Gajeda.
Here.
Director Chaclon. Director Gedney.
Here.
Director Hawkins. Director Acetuno.
President.
President Apodaca.
Present. Invocation, please, Director Acetuno and such of allegiance.
We'll do it.
Okay. Going to the pledge instead.
Yeah.
Invocation.
The pledge instead.
He's going to pledge.
Unless if you want me to change it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. You don't mind doing the invocation?
Sure.
To the pledge.
No, okay, no problem. Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for bringing us all here safely. Make this a productive day. Bless everyone in this room. And we offer this up to you in your name. Amen.
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 To render our very heart, defeat after me. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the rear of the flag from which stands one nation under God, and with this all, with the freedom of justice for all.
Certification, do we have?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Public comments and presentations, do we have any?
No. No comment cards, no presentation, sir.
Let me just make one comment, my own. I don't know if anybody else wants to make one. I'm a little disappointed that with all of the interest that everybody has about our expenses and our charges and our whatever has come up in the past, that we don't have a bigger turnout of people from the pumpers as well as the public. That's my personal comment.
The directors, in their defense, they were briefed at the purveyor workshop just a couple of weeks ago on basically this, and they'll get briefed again, so.
The other?
Yeah.
Because the others I'm referring to. With that, we go to item four, general, what was it? Presentation and discussion of the proposed fiscal year 2017-18 budget.
Thank you, directors. And this is an exciting time. It's our first time with a new board going over the budget and that. But before we go through the detail, we go through a little bit of why we're doing this and also how we do it. First thing to remind everybody is the mission that we agreed to when we did our strategic planning, that Central Basin is an innovative, responsive, and effective steward of the water service and management responsibility entrusted to us. And that's what we try and do as we go through our day-to-day activities. What we're going to try and cover today, and it's a pretty ambitious agenda, but is we're going to go through the goals for the strategic plan briefly and the budget process briefly, give you a quick overview of the budget, and particularly the revenue sources part of it. Then each of the departments will give an over detailed presentation on the budget that they're proposing for their departments. We'll then discuss the capital improvement plan and its various facets. We'll have a summary at the end. We'll go through staffing then and overall in the organization chart. And we'll do the budget overview, including the final metric that we end up with, which is the debt coverage ratio and conclusion. All throughout this, this is a board workshop. Comments are welcome. We will capture every comment. For the new directors, this is something where we're tough to read the tea leaves. If one director says, well, I think we should reduce this that much, we'll take a note of it and we'll try and achieve it. If it's a specific comment, well, I don't think you should be doing this project, that has to go back through committee and be voted on as a change in policy. But in terms of guidance, of level of effort and that, we can adopt those as comments as they go through. It should be an interactive process. As we get done with this, we will take it again to the finance committee, to the purveyors, and back to the board. And so we welcome all input, please. It's a complex process. It also is a living document. We've had changes since we pared this yesterday to today. New information we get, quotes on insurance, et cetera. So there will be some minor variations as we go through this, and we'll always call your attention to that when we get to it. Does that, if everybody understands that, okay? Okay. Just reiterating first the goals of Central Basin. Our first one's on water reliability. Our second one is on financial integrity. A third one was stewardship and our human and capital assets. And the fourth is communication with all of our different constituencies. Specifically with regard to water reliability, when we put together the budget this year and we put together a strategic plan, water reliability, we're focused on recycling water development because of the, it's the best way to know to protect the region's reliability in an era of declining imported water sales and unpredictable nature replenishment deliveries. On financial integrity, it's very straightforward. We want to secure this district's financial stability while investing in key programs and projects that benefit our customers. Everything we do should benefit our customers. If it doesn't, we shouldn't be doing it. The third is on stewardship. And we want to ensure that we retain and develop highly qualified staff. I believe in a highly qualified staff is the most efficient way to operate. And we want to maintain and strengthen the district's capital assets. And that's something we really are going to have to work on. And the fourth, communications. We want to serve as a leader in water policy that impacts our region. And there is a lot of it out there right now that does. And we want to provide opportunities to engage our stakeholders on key water issues on a regular and ongoing basis. So the process that we've been going through for the budget, we started with staff meetings. We've had actually more than six by now, senior staff meetings. We get together, they permit the guidelines for the budget, they go back and populate it, we go through it together. We've had a lot of hard work to get through the process. We have a total of six presentations planned on it that we'll go through with you in a minute. And the whole goal of this is to be able to have the board have sufficient input from the purveyors, from staff, from whoever is interested in discussing themselves, that we can finally have a board of directors' approval at the end of the month of May. We started with the purveyor workshop on April 12th. It was an information item on the board meeting on Monday. This budget workshop is the first real detail that the board gets on it. Finance committee will get a follow-up on implementation of the changes that have been made and any new things that have come up. We have another purveyor workshop on the 17th. By that time, the document should be pretty close to final. And then it'll go to the board on the 22nd with all of the feedback from those different processes. The question people sometimes ask, well, why do you have to do it on May? Why not June? Well, our budget is helpful and our rates are helpful for the, we're a wholesale agency. It helps for the retail agencies to set theirs, which have to be implemented in June. So the sooner we can do ours, the easier it is on them. Could we slip a month? Yeah, we could if we had to for some significant reason. But it usually has a courtesy to the retail agencies to try and get your wholesale budgets done as soon as possible. Couple of quick numbers on what we're working with. Our total operating budget this year is close to 51, in revenues is 51 million, expenses is 49 and change million. An operating budget is carefully defined. That includes the interest payments on your bonds, does not include your bond principal payment, does not include capital payment. So the operating budget, when you take the pass-throughs out, we have 13.2 million in operating revenues, 11.6 million roughly in operating costs. So there's a delta between them. The sources of revenue is something that we don't spend enough time, I'm going to trial with the next year, to work closely with the board and the committees to really get everybody to understand where we get our money and how we get it and alternative ways of doing it. We import potable water and sell it. This year, we're only projecting, or next year, we're projected to sell 18,500. That's a record low projection as far as I could back in the history of the district. Replenishment water, we're projecting 25,000. I'll be discussing that in more detail because there's a number issues on how we get to that number. We have a water meter service charge, which is a charge per connected CFS that we send out monthly to the agencies that get met water. Our recycled water projected is 5,300 acre feet. It's been steadily climbing the last couple of years, finally. Water quality projection plan is a pass-through. Whatever it costs us, we are supposed to be covered by the agencies of benefit. The standby charge is a fixed charge the board adopted, which generates about 3.2 million a year on a partial charge. Investment earnings is something that we took a significant dive last year, some decisions made in how we invested, and we're slowly correcting that, moving more into longer-term assets and into late and less into the day-to-day cash available. So we're hoping to get those boosted up. Miscellaneous is a department I know board likes, no section no board likes to see. In this case, it includes things like our City of Pico Rivera contract and miscellaneous payments that we have coming in from, let's say, the Montebello comes up, project or comes out of things like that. And last, and there is retirement, retirement benefit reimbursement. We actually, at one time, the three districts were all combined, WRD, Central Basin and West Basin. And so we have some retirees that we still get the bills for, and then we bill it to West Basin and WRD. And so this is the reimbursement. We decided this, the last time they've had it hidden away somewhere, I thought it'd be better to show it this time as income coming from them and the total cost you'll see when Deena gives her presentation. So that's our sources of revenue for now. When you look at the present pie chart, it stands out that our revenue comes from recycled water and the standby charge, potable water sales and replenishment sales. I mean, that's the bulk of it right there. And fairly well balanced, but recycled water is our biggest source of revenue. This just shows you the recent.
Potable replenishment rate.
Again, this is, our rates have already been adopted for July unless the board decides to change them. The rates were adopted in the rate workshop we did in Board Actions last summer and adopted rates that went into effect in January and in July. So we have, I believe it's an 8% rate increase that's built into this right now. So these are the rates that we have for there and the recycle rates. And the last rate at the bottom is the water meter service charge of $87 per CFS per month. I mean, if you have a 10 CFS connection, you pay $870 a month as a fixed fee. And again, that's one of the rates that we'll be looking at this summer. I want to spend a little time talking about water sales because it really is dramatic and it is one of the reasons why we really have to be creative in how we approach our financial things to develop the stability we need. Our water sales, you can see our potable sales have declined drastically. Now, that's a good thing. That means the community is conserving water, conservation is working, the groundwater management plans are working, and it's actually reducing the overall cost of water in the service area. So it's not a bad thing, it's just stuff on us financially. With regard to replenishment sales, if you look at the last four years, we had replenishment sales in 2014, 15, 15, 16. This year, we were projected to sell 38,000. We got to 32,600. It was held up because of the rains. Then there was the potential quagga issue that's held them up. That is being worked out between Fish and Game and Metropolitan and the county, and we think the letter is supposed to be in the mail as we speak. Whether we get additional water through the replenishment program this year is problematical because the replenishment water really has to be delivered before May 1st. If it's after May 1st, you pay the capacity charge and it destroys the economic value of it. There is another project, another approach that we'll be talking about in the committee next week, and it's the cyclic storage option that Met has put on the table, which will enable us to take replenishment water without paying that charge in May, June, July, August through the summer. So the replenished water, if we don't take it this time, we can, that amount that's missing would move over into the 25,000 for next year's projection, it would go to 30. If we do the cyclic storage and get it done in time, then we may get that 5,000 done this year. Again, if not, it might start sooner than, but it's going to, if that cyclic storage is approved and works, it will free up the timeframe in which we have to do replenishment, make it much easier. So that's one uncertainty in the budget at this time. We hope by the end of May to have that decision of how much exactly replenishment water we will sell next year. And kudos to Tammy and Kevin Wadia for their work on the cyclic storage. It's going to be a good opportunity. And last thing on the flows, of course, is the recycled water flows. What you have to remember is that in 14, 15, 15, 16 is when we lost the Rose Hill connection, which got some federal money to allow them to connect directly to the county sands. And so we lost a sale of about 300, 350 acre feet. And we're doing, as soon as I'm projected, do a very good job of rebounding back from that. We should be on the up from now on. Overview of the debt service that we have. It's a total of 3.6 million, and it says before swap cost. There are some swap costs that are embedded. Primarily, it's the letter of credit cost, and that's in our financial numbers. It's not, but the total of the hardcore debt service is 3.6 million, include debt of 2.2 and principal of, you know, interest of 2.2 and principal of 1.4 million. These are numbers we have to pay every year. It's a fixed payment and, you know, it just has to be done. Luckily, it pretty much matches our standby charge. So a quick overview of the budget before I turn it over to the managers. First of all, are there any questions to date on any of the sources of revenue and projections on their reliability and that?
So the 5,000, Kevin, of replenishment water was budgeted for 17?
Yes.
And if it doesn't hit before the end of June, it's going to roll into next year?
Yeah.
Is that going to make our budget short this year?
No, I think because we budgeted, the number increased as we went through.
Okay.
Now, we'd love to have it this year because we've had a couple of unexpected costs, the Belkey settlement and the election costs that altogether over half a million dollar hit. So if we can get the extra 5,000 sale, that's 350,000, would help us make a better debt coverage ratio at the end of the year. But if it goes into next year, you know, it'll help out next year's budget. The bottom line is that next year is the last year of significant replenishment sales. After that, it should drop down to 5,000 or 6,000 and beyond that, it's be intermittent.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, then, Margarita. Our first section up is going to be the district administration and director of administrative services, Margarita.
Good morning, directors. So under the Department of Administration and Board Services, we're responsible for providing assistance to the board of directors, implementing district policies set by the board, the development of public notices in accordance with open meeting laws, as well as the maintenance of district records. With that said, I'll be going over the department overview, which is broken down into two categories, district administration specific to the operations of the department, as well as board services, which is specific to our board of directors. The proposed budget for the district administration and board services department is just slightly above 1 million. Of that, 679,708 is for district administration. And the breakdown here on PowerPoint, as you see, is for four FTEs, which includes the salaries and benefits. Consultants, which is Lighthouse, our ethics hotline provider, as well as we're planning for our yearly records destruction. That total for 2,800. Professional development in the amount of 8,250. This is for board secretary training as well. We have a staff person who's currently pursuing a master's program. As well as memberships for the California Special District Association, the National Notary Association, Association of Records Managers and Administrators in the amount of 7,315. 7,000 of that is specific to the California Special District Association. Then we also included for office supplies for the department, meeting expense, subscriptions in the amount of 1,000. Specifically, that subscription is for the water code. We also budgeted for employee travel and conference, for Aqua conferences, for the Colorado River Water Users Conference, the California Special District Association, and any legislative trust for the general manager as well, in the amount of 8,350. So as Kevin had indicated, over the last few months, staff has been meeting to develop this draft budget. And keep in mind that one of our district goals is financial integrity, and as a district, we will manage our financial resources, be responsible, as well as effective and in a transparent fashion. We went back, looked at the budget to see where we could make potential reductions in our first draft budget. And so that brings me to the next slide here. We've identified under district administration, $9,000 in reductions. 25% of that is for professional development that we could put off to the next fiscal year, as well as 25% reduction in conference expense for our district administration. This is a result of a conversation amongst all the departments to reduce conference travel by 20%. And also 56% in consultant expense, which is after doing our records destruction, we noticed that the amount that we had budgeted originally wasn't as high, and we recently did a destruction just a couple of weeks ago that was under $1,000. And so that leads me next to our board services, which is, we are proposing 392,938. The breakdown for that consists of our directors per diem, car, and communication allowances, as well as benefits. Director conference travel, 48,000 in this. It's the allowance for the directors in addition for the Aqua representative, Aqua JPI representative to attend the meetings as well. Consultant expense for our board retreat, this is at the pleasure of the board. We wanted to include something should the board feel the need for a board retreat. And we wanted a budget for a facilitator. It's totally at the discretion of the board if this is something you want to keep in your budget. Courier services, this is specific to FedEx services that we use. On occasion, we'll have to FedEx a package to our directors or whether it's to legal counsel. Office supplies, specific to business cards in the amount of 1,500. And meeting expense, which is for our board meetings of 6,000. And postage for regular mailings for our directors, 1,000. And so as I'd indicated before, we went back and looked at the budget to be physically responsible and identified cuts in board services in the amount of 123,200. And this is largely due in part to our appointed directors who have opted not to receive compensation for attending meetings, which puts a 40% reduction in that area or the equivalent of 112,000. As well as conference expense, we figured that if as staff we were taking the cut, our directors were proposing that to also reduce it by 20%. So currently, the allowance for our directors is 7,000 per fiscal year. We are recommending it to lower it to 5,600 a year. And then I also do want to make a mention of it, that compared to last year's budget, this budget does not include election expense. And we are also not recommending an increase in director per diem, and this would be specifically for the month of March 2018 through June 2018. Any questions, directors?
Bill and I have here is a reduction of 123 from draft budget. Is that a reduction from last year's budget or just from the draft from?
So essentially, the 123 is for not having the appointed directors, and they've opted not to receive compensation. So this wouldn't have been in addition to the last year budget. So we're not making any additions. They've opted not to receive per diem.
Okay, I believe you mentioned something about traveling or something like that, coming down from seven to five something?
So from 7,000, which is what we currently have in the directors' travel allowance per director, we're recommending for it to be $5,600 for the next fiscal year.
Do we have anything about a freeze of positions or hiring or contracts or anything like that?
I'll leave that to the general.
No, we are proposing a budget staffing as we go through. And again, by the way, and this is, if I might mention, this is my suggestion. There are two ways to achieve it. One is to put a flat-out cut in and every director has 5,600. Everybody doesn't use it. The other way is to keep the old thing and just recognize that you're not all going to use your $7,000 allowance. And so therefore, we can say the 80% of that is going to be done. We come to the same, the same result.
No, I mean, I understand, but that was not my question. My question is, do we have anything of freeze of positions, you know, consultants, anything like that in there?
No, no.
I think maybe we should be focusing on things like that.
That's as we get through the staffing and the consultants.
That's what I was asking, if there's something in there?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, directors? Thank you.
Good morning, directors. I'm going to be presenting the finance information today. The finance department is responsible for the district's finance and accounting functions in addition to annual reports, implementing the procurement policy, our contracts, as well as ensuring the district operates with fiscal responsibility. Looking at their total budget, the 3,343,000 includes our bond interest payments, and you'll see that broken down here shortly. Looking at the general and administrative portion of the department, we have 4.60 full-time equivalents. Accounting and auditing services are included in there at $25,950. Consulting is, consultants at 57,500. 50,000 of that is looking at a new revenue source. 7,500 of that is looking, or I'm sorry, is for a CalPERS actuarial that's required. 48,915 is for bank and office fees. This includes office supplies, union bank charges, postage, and courier services. The county assessment charges of 17,000, this is our LAFCO membership. And lastly, employee travel at 12,750. It's a little bit higher because the CSF, I'm sorry, this is the only department that has one international conference for the CSF MO conference. Looking at the next portion here, our standby charges, which would be the second piece of the pie for finance. Expenses in here include consultants, advertisements, and assessment charges, all related to our standby assessment. This is specific to our standby assessment. Lastly, looking at the bonds, there's three sets of bonds that we pay interest on, the 2008 bonds, the 2010 bonds, and the 2016 A bonds, which are new for this year. This is the bonds that were refinanced, and this is the new bonds that helped lower that spike to the 2008 bonds. Are there any questions, directors?
Straightforward.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, Albert, consultant, new revenue source, what is that?
I'll be with you. There's two in that. One is that I believe that we need to develop a new fixed charge revenue source to make up for the loss of replenishment water and the loss of potable sales. And that is a study that should be done to make sure that we conform to 26 in particular, 218 is not really applicable to us. So it requires that you have a consultant do a study on it. There's also 7,500 for the actuarial study we do.
How much is this, how much is the study?
50,000 is what I estimated it would be based on what we did last year with our cash flow study.
What's the timing of that study? Is that?
It would follow, it would follow the strategic plan. The first thing is a strategic planning effort to make sure we have our focus for the year, and the board agrees to do this. That would then follow, so it would probably be in the second quarter of the next fiscal year. The idea would be to finish that study in time to implement it in the budget process the following year. And again, the real driver upon this is equity, that there are, with the loss of sale of replenishment water, there are many agencies that benefit from our services and simply do not pay what we do in the first place.
I assume we'll go through the same RFP process to come?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Are there any other questions, directors? Thank you, sir.
Howard, I got a question, sir. Do we have a list of all the consultants that we're doing business with right now?
For the, for contracts?
Yes.
Yes, sir. We actually report it to the finance committee every quarter.
Can I get a copy of that, please?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Good morning, directors. I'll be covering the human resources department. As you know, the HR department is responsible for the effective selection, development, and retention of the district's talent. This includes the development of human resources systems to ensure the district meets its objectives. In addition, the department is also responsible for implementation of the strategic plan and the development of risk management programs. As you are aware, goal three of our plan says that we will act as responsible stewards of human and capital resources assets, and this department basically takes care of those items and those goals. To give you, before I begin with the overview of this year or next year's budget, I'd like to call your attention to the handout that's listed in the agenda that was posted. I want to make I want to make mention of why you see an increase in the HR budget since fiscal year 16. And the main reasons are back in 2016, CalPERS decided to account for their unfunded accrued liability in a lump sum. So the Finance Department basically placed that lump sum expense in the HR budget. The other reason is that we now have insurance for employment practices and directors and officers insurance, and that also sits in my budget. And the last thing that I want to mention as to the increase over the last three years has been because of our increase in retiree health cost. But I wanted to make a mention in case there was a question about that. Looking at the breakdown of the budget, the department includes two full-time employees. We also have in within the budget the CalPERS mandatory contribution of $284,000 for unfunded liability. This is an increase of $48,000 from the current year and $31,000 from the previous year. Another budgetary item you'll see in the HR Department budget is the annual required contribution, or ARC, towards other post-employment benefits. Those are the health benefits for the retirees. The last actuarial for OPEP was done back in June 30th, 2015. And according to that last actuarial, the ARC contribution for fiscal year 18 will need to be $145,000. Now, this amount may increase once we do the next scheduled actuarial, which is scheduled for June 30th, 2017. But I'd like to take a brief moment to explain how the ARC contribution is calculated. The contribution, the ARC contribution takes into question two types of costs. One of them is the cost for the benefits for the current retirees for the current year. And the second is the unfunded liability for future benefits. Because the annual contribution includes the current benefit cost, we are able to subtract the cost for current health premiums for retirees to offset the ARC contribution. This is why we're budgeting only half of the ARC payment instead of the full $145,000. Please let me know if you have any questions regarding that. But we will have a better idea exactly what our ARC contribution will be for June 30th, 2018, once we complete the next actuarial, which will be end of June. If you don't have any questions, I'll move on to the next item.
Right there, okay, we're doing the unfunded. So we're only doing the funding of the employees portion, not the funding of our portion?
This is for retirees directors. So this covers the cost of, not for active employees, no.
Okay, that was, because I was wondering how the growth, I'll get to that one then, okay.
And it's come up in the past. Currently, we are funded 75% in our OPEP trust. Moving on to the next item, as you know, we were unable to gain reentry.
What is the annual merit pool, what is that for a reason?
The annual merit pool, the district has historically and per policy, when it offers salary increases to its employees, it provides those increases based on performance merit. And there is a merit pool budgeted in the HR budget for 4%, which is $99,000. The district does not do any cost of living adjustments.
So I'm sorry, explain that to me again, how does that work?
Would you like to?
It's, we only, we budget for raises each year. Normally, that's two components. One is cost of living adjustments. If people, if you do that, and you usually have a separate merit pool. We don't do that. We have one merit pool. If someone's not performing, they get no raise. If someone's performing average, they get an average. If someone's performing well, they get a bigger raise. We manage that pool like that. Ranges last year range from different people. We also check whether it ranges from 0 to 17%, which enables you to reward your high performers and motivate your low performers.
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
We take this, okay, this is how we give people raises. Okay? We don't say cost of living, everybody gets 2%. We say there's a pool of money. We look at their performance, what they've done, talk to their managers and that, and I come up with what I believe is the appropriate raise. We do it as a group, actually.
Where does the pool of money come from?
Right here. You're budgeting it in this item right here.
So I'm not sure, I mean, it's like $100 and you, I don't quite understand it.
We're but 4% of these salaries is what we're budgeting. Would be the equivalent of every employee getting a 4% raise. That's what's budgeted.
So the maximum raise would be 4%?
No, no. The minimum raise is zero, the maximum raise is whatever is the appropriate raise for their performance and the way they sit in their pay grade.
So is it, let's say the entire salaries are a million dollars, 4% of a million dollars is what you have to deal with?
Yeah, that's right.
Raises can be anywhere from 0 to, you say 17%?
Last year, we had one because again, you have people that are, they get a promotion or they're out of whack and we do salary surveys to see if they're in the right classification. So we had someone was out of their classification.
Do those salary surveys come back before the board for adoption approval?
Yeah, we do on a regular basis. It's not production.
Do you have a schedule of your salaries?
Yes, I don't have it with me, but it's listed on the website under the HR page.
Are there steps-free salaries? Are there steps-free salaries?
No, they're based just on a range. And we go out to the market, to the job market, every two years, every three years. Historically, that's what we've been doing. But the ranges are approved by the board.
No, excuse me, the raises are not approved.
The ranges.
The ranges are approved by the board, the range within the thing. We do that based on a survey. For example, if you had a security guard position that was a full-time position, you could say that the range for that is from $20 an hour to $25. If our existing person was at 19, then there'd be a bigger adjustment to get them within the range. If our existing person was at 25, then he'd be capped out within that range. And I'd have to come back to the board for an adjustment on that, so.
Dina?
Yes.
Is there any way we can get a list of all the employees and their salaries?
Yes, I believe that we can provide you with that copy. We also.
Is that?
I believe Director Chacon requested a list of.
I believe the text on the website, Director.
Yeah, I know, but I just, I'd like to have a copy.
I wanted to mention that through the State Controller's Office of the state of California, this information is also readily available to everyone. And our ranges are public information, they're in the, on the website. And Director Gahida will make you, will get you a copy of that.
I'll go to the website, see if I can find it.
I'd like to have a copy of that, Dina.
Sure.
Thank you.
With regard to, was there any other? I did. I'm going to take a minute to go back. So going back to the information related to our employment practices liability and public officials insurance information, we have budgeted $124,000 for that. We're still in the process of securing coverage for July 1st effective date. And we'll have more information at the committee next month as well as for the board with regard to our insurance strategies. Moving on to the next slide. Was there a question?
Yeah, before we get too far ahead, I think you answered it, but I don't think I understood it. Our unfunded liability, we are paying the employees portion of it, but we're not paying our portion or there was a 75% you said, and I'm not sure. Explain that one to me.
Sure. So there are two types of unfunded liabilities that the district has to address related to employees. One of them is the CalPERS pension program. The other is the OPEP, which is related to the health benefits for retirees. Both of those are in the HR budget. The pension-related unfunded liability is budgeted for $284,000. And the OPEP.
That's fully funded. That's fully funded. That's what the, as we're paying.
See, what, yeah, what I am concerned about is I know we only have to make minimum payments. And I know a lot of cities are doing that and their unfunded is huge. I don't want to get to that point where we have this debt laying out there that's huge that we only have to pay a small amount on. I want to make sure we keep up. And I don't know how big that unfunded liability is now. Hopefully, it's small, because at one time, we were fully paid up except for each yearly.
Correct.
And are we still on that track? Are we still doing?
Yes, we are. I don't have the OPEP, and you're referring to the OPEP benefit?
No, no, no. He's talking about the pension.
You're talking about pension?
Stay with the pension, yeah.
Oh, you're talking about pension?
Yeah, the unfunded portion that we're supposed to pay.
At this point, we're 75% funded.
Okay, so we're only, we're gaining about 25% on our unfunded then, if we're paying 75%. See, there's where I.
No, no, that's, excuse me, we're not saying that's what we're paying. We are, and we get an actual report that says your total liability is, let's pick a number, are $3 million.
Right.
We have 75% of that stored up. The problem is that number changes every year when you do actuarials and CalPERS has changed how they calculate it. Now, they're decreasing their projected investment earnings significantly over the next several years. So that number will increase. So at one time, where we were doing fine, it's going to come down. Now, the way they cover that is they increase the payment each year. That's why you saw $48,000 jump in our payment this year from last year.
Right.
So it's a, it's a complicated thing, and I'd be glad to sit down and look through it, but it is, it's going to get worse before it gets better the way it's going right now.
Kevin, if I may clarify.
That's like the alligator sitting out there waiting to bite you. And I don't want to get that alligator too big so that we can't handle it either.
And if I may clarify, the director was right with regard to the OPEP back in 2009, 2010.
Please stay off the OPEP for right now, though.
His question was related to the OPEP.
No, his question, this had to do with the pension, Dina. The OPEP will handle that as a separate one and it's a totally separate fund, much different liability.
It was unfunded liability, whatever unfunded liability covers. That was my question.
Okay, let me assist with this. Dina, what is the norm in the industry if you look around different jurisdictions? As far as the pension cost is concerned, not OPEP? What is the average unfunded rate that people are usually within nowadays?
I don't have that information readily available, but we can certainly look at that.
It's in the 70s.
Yeah.
So we're within the range.
Okay.
And then the other thing is that with these projections, you have to look out at least 10 or 20 years, because there are a lot of other factors that come into the picture, such as the PEPRA. With the tier one, tier two, and tier three now employees, the cost of liability for pension is going to decrease on the agencies. So you have to bring that into the, so actuarials, that's why you look at it every year and then you figure out how much you have to contribute. Because you don't want to be ever fully funded, because that's the money that you could use for the other things rather than paying it to, to their pension fund.
That's correct. Thank you, Director. And CalPERS sets what that amount will be every year for us?
Yes.
Dina, it also seems to me that you have, your ARC is $72,000, but you're also contributing almost 3/4 of a million dollars to catch back up on your unfunded. Your financial statement should reflect on it, what your total reliability is.
It does.
So do you know what that is right now?
Yeah, I don't have it on my fingertips, but we have it. It's, it'll be actually updated again. I believe we have to update our actuarials this June.
That is what I believe Director Hawkins is asking for, what that number is.
Okay.
And then how you're achieving to cut that back and eventually get to zero, if that's even possible. We've got the same with, so.
And it may be good, actually, if we can get the actuary when he comes in to do the study to give a little workshop for the committee or even the board on that. It's a very timely subject.
We can definitely arrange that.
And the second part of this, now you can talk about the OPEP, it's just the retirees' health, a much smaller pool, much less liability. And the tricky part on that that Dina was trying to explain is that, well, it says your mandatory payment is $144,000 a year. Because we pay part of it each year, we pay the insurance premium for them, and that counts toward that. We could actually pay, I think, we actually pay more than $144.
We do, yeah.
So we're actually contributing 72. We could contribute zero and still be in compliance, but we're contributing 72 as a balance to try and keep us always ahead of the game as you so aptly said. So that's where we're trying to stay ahead of it.
Do you have any numbers or figures that we can see on that?
Yes, we can actually bring that to the Finance Committee. The actuarial last time was $2 million, our assets in the OPEP. It's over $2 million, and we'll get that over to you. We can bring it up at the Finance Committee for discussion.
I'd kind of like to see that maybe even go over at some, at some point.
No, that's, and that's a very good point, because both of these are complex issues, but the pension one is the biggest weight out there. This one here is luckily under control for now.
Well, that's what concerns me is because I've seen these cities have these huge unfunded liability. It's like making minimum payments on your credit card so that you can go buy a new car. No, we should be taking care of our unfunded liability.
And as Director Oskey mentioned, we have three different, we have the old, you know, 3% at 60, then we have the 2% at 55, and now we have the 2% at 62. That will reduce the pension liability for new employees, but we're going to have a bubble as the 3 for the 60 retires out, so. Long-term, it's going to be, it'll come down under control, but it's not going to be for a number of years.
See, I'd kind of like to see some of that, because.
Okay, we'll put, that's a great point. We'll put together a presentation on it.
Your actuarial should have a curve that shows into the next 20 years what has happened. You know, again, as you mentioned, it's going to dip down to somewhere in the 60s, right? And then it's going to go back up to close to 100% in about, what, the norm is about 17 to 20 years.
Yeah.
Duly noted, Director. We will bring these items before you. Moving on to this next slide, we have $30,000 set aside for a strategic plan update to bring onboard a consultant to help us with that process. And that is scheduled for July. So we will.
A consultant to that, over that?
Excuse me, is that what?
Is that needed?
I believe so. I mean, we did the last one, I think it was $25,000. It was very economically done. It's not that we couldn't, I mean, I'm bringing, I've done this type of stuff, I facilitated it. But it normally is better if you have an outside facilitator do it. He brings in different perspective and there's a better opportunity for all of us to participate. If I'm the facilitator, I can't participate. But again, this is something, we may be able to do it cheaper.
Maybe less expensively?
Yeah, I think, I think we can do it less expensively, but it just, but that would mean actually sitting down and negotiating with the guy who did it last time if we're going to do a procurement process, which we assume we would.
You've got that going on, and you've got a study of $50,000. And we're not sure where we're going to be at the end of the year. So I don't see trying to cut back. I'm just asking questions right now, Kevin, trying to see where we can reduce our costs.
Yeah, I understand that. And I guess when you say you don't see trying to cut back, there are two things you're trying to do here. One is make financial numbers, the other is ensure the district's future. Both of these studies are aimed toward ensuring the district's future. The strategic plan is to help with the three new directors, four accountant director, Asitun, get integrated and understand the district to the same level that the other directors have in terms of working. But again, this is something, if the board's decision at the end is, we don't need the strategic plan, do it yourselves and bring us up, that's fine, we can do that. But on the finance, we need the help.
I'm sorry, when was the last plan updated or done?
It was in January of 2015, we started on it.
May 2015.
May, it was finished by May, right?
Yes.
Finished by May.
And at the end of the day, this is a balanced budget you're presenting today, right?
Yeah, exactly. Balanced in the operating budget, and we'll go through that at the end.
But it includes purchasing water from, it includes replenishment costs, which we don't even know if we'll even be able to get water into the county flood control facility.
Again, there, we don't know too much of the technical stuff. Tammy and Kevin Madi are working very closely with on that. But Metropolitan and the state are pretty confident there are no quagga's. It's just a matter of providing the data in the correct format to ensure the county. The Fish and Game Department is preparing a letter right now. As soon as that letter comes out, this problem is solved. If the letter doesn't come out, then we need to sit down and negotiate it. And we've already had contingency plans on this in terms of how you deal with it.
It scared me, a board meeting, Tammy stated that Fish and Game has stated they didn't turn ass to create our activity. So I was surprised that this letter not out and Fish and Games still isn't where they're supposed to be. That's what I thought I heard at the board meeting. So I'm concerned about this issue, because I don't want to budget for it, and we don't get it, Kevin. I have no problem.
No, I understand. And that's why I think this issue will be determined, when I talked about replenishment and I talked about it, this issue will be determined by the end of May, when we take the board, the budget for a vote. If it isn't determined, then we're going to have to look at some different approach. But right now, I'm very, I give it a 95% chance that this issue will be solved.
Between the county flood control and Metropolitan Water District?
It's the county flood control, Fish and Game, Metropolitan Water District. It's the county flood control, Fish and Game, Metropolitan Water District. And we're not the only ones obviously looking at that. There's a, this happens to be the wettest year on record. There is a fire sale with water. You can get the cheapest water available in years. Not just Article twenty-one, which is twenty-dollar an acre foot water on the state project, but the city of L.A. will give you water for free to store. But you gotta be able to put it in the ground. And so, there's a lot of pressure to get this, to make this happen this year. And creative people, I mean, we'll get this solved.
To wrap up, thirteen thousand has been budgeted for required third-party administrative fees. Five thousand seven hundred has been budgeted for consideration for employee recognition and engagement. And six thousand has been budgeted for training. That includes a thousand one hundred for CPR training, as well as five thousand for leadership training for the management team. Lastly, I wanna close this piece of the presentation to make mention of our retiree health cost. Next year, we're looking at an approximate cost of two hundred and sixteen thousand, of which sixty thousand will be reimbursed from our sister agencies that share the cost of some of these retirees. The increase from this year is eighty-seven thousand, which represents a sixty-seven percent increase from the current fiscal year, as far as our retiree health cost.
Dina, quick question. That sixty thousand, is that a total figure or is that a each figure? In other words, total of sixty thousand?
A total figure from West Basin, W R D.
And Dina, how many retirees do we have?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
This concludes my piece of the presentation unless you have any other questions.
Yeah, both thirteen. You know, I'll talk to you at home. How many are from when we were, when the agencies were all together?
There are a handful. There are about five of them.
When you say agencies altogether, you're talking about Western Central or all three of them?
I'm talking about what I'm looking at on the screen. Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, so there's not five that were from West Central and the replenishment district, are there, out of the thirteen?
No, three of them, there's like two or three of them are from all three agencies.
Yeah, two or three, okay.
And we have two of them that are just West Basin.
Okay.
So, not five from W R D and Central Basin?
We have about three of them that are from West Basin, Central Basin, and W R D, and two of them just with West Basin. Thank you.
Alrighty. Good morning, Directors. On behalf of the district, I'll be discussing the role of external affairs in our budget proposal for fiscal year seventeen eighteen. And really, the focus of the department is to build awareness of the district, our programs and projects, as well as provide venues for the public to become engaged on water issues. And this is accomplished through four primary areas. Through government relations, through provision of environmental education programs, through strategic communications and public information, as well as through stakeholder engagement. And the department itself, the overall budget is, the proposed budget for fiscal year seventeen eighteen is nine hundred and seven thousand sixty-eight dollars. To give you some context, this is actually a reduction from last year of fourteen percent or a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. I'll be going through the different program areas with respect to the budget. Department administration is where we carry the cost for our employees mainly. So, we are looking at four point four six full-time equivalents, which is inclusive of salaries and benefits. This is four full-time employees and one intern. We're looking at grant consulting services in the amount of sixty-five thousand five hundred dollars. And the goal of this service is to secure funding for district projects and programs, as well as provide information to retailers on potential funding opportunities. The real focus in this area is really looking at funding through Proposition One. The current focus, I should say, is on Proposition One funding for recycled water projects. And as recent as this week, we had the opportunity to meet with representatives for the State Water Resources Control Board and Department of Water Resources to discuss some of our applications, knowing that it's key to the board that we have funding in place for our projects as we proceed. Also included within this program area is travel-related expenses. You'll see that travel-related expenses are at sixteen thousand five hundred dollars and I'll explain why that amount is higher than usual. And really, the key thing is because this year, and it'll address one of your concerns, Director Chacon, with regards to reduction in consultants. This year, we are not going, we are not going forward with the services of a state lobbyist. So, that cuts out a huge chunk with regards to expenditures for the Department of External Affairs. And I'll go through that when we discuss the government relations aspect of our budget. When we look at, what we look at doing with regards to travel-related expenditures, these are key towards our advocacy and water industry engagement. And what we're looking at is participation in the Legislative Symposium for Aqua in Sacramento, participation in the Federal Issues Conference, Aqua's Federal Issues Conference in Washington, D.C. And what we do is we coincide our federal trips with our Aqua D.C. trip so that we're not going out there multiple times throughout the year. Also, through participation in the California Special Districts Association Legislative Committee, the participation in the California Special Districts Legislative Days and their annual conference, and also funding for legislative advocacy as needed. If that's not an area where we need to be, last year, we knew that we were active in going to Sacramento, racking up our Southwest miles, but that's, if that's not necessary, that's not gonna be an area that we are as active in as we are in last, as we were last year. With regards to office supplies, we're budgeting three thousand dollars. And the reason for that is because through external affairs, we are really tasked with developing a lot of our different promotional items that we produce, as well as different types of office supplies. With regards to postage, we're budgeting three thousand dollars. And the reason for that is because when we market our education programs, we send flyers to each of the educators in our service area, if it's a program that's specific to their grade. Professional memberships is one thousand dollars and that's for two professional memberships within the Public Relations Society of America. I'll move forward. There we go. The proposed budget, well, to provide you some context, the district's education, environmental education programs last year reached over twenty-seven thousand students, really with the focus being on encouraging water use efficiency in our youth and promoting opportunities within the water industry. The proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year is a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, two, a hundred and sixty-five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Really, what that includes is, and overall, this is a decrease of ten percent from the last fiscal year, consultant-related expenditures of a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars for five of the district's environmental education programs, twenty thousand dollars for chartered transportation expenditures. And what this is, is to transport students from their school to one of the district's programs, which is off-site. Printing cost of over eight, a little over eight thousand dollars. And this is for activity books that are provided to students, for direct mailers. This is for the actual production of mailers that are sent to teachers, as well as teacher and student guides. Additionally, an outreach expense of sixteen thousand dollars. On an annual basis, the district supports up to four solar cup teams that are selected throughout our service area to represent us in the Metropolitan Water District Solar Cup Contest. That's varied between three and four teams, dependent upon availability. And also, for recognition of the student winner of the Water is Life poster contest, which is also in partnership with the Metropolitan Water District. But what we do is we bring the student down here, usually in June or July, to recognize them for their artistic achievement. And really, with the idea, the whole idea behind the contest is to promote water conservation. And lastly, with regards to education, membership within the Think Earth Environmental Education Foundation. And the reason that we include this is because this provides access to the district for environmental education materials for participants in our Central Basin environmental education programs. Moving forward, with regards to government relations, the proposed budget is a little under fifteen thousand dollars. And this is a significant increase from fiscal years, I'm sorry, yes.
You said that the budget was a decrease of ten percent?
From prior adopted fiscal year.
Do you know what that was?
The dollar amount itself was seventeen thousand four hundred dollars. That's the decrease from last year's adopted to this year's proposed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. The proposed budget for government relations is a little under fifteen thousand dollars and this is a significant increase from the adopted budget last year. In fact, that's a decrease of a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars or nearly ninety percent. The focus of this program area within external affairs is to strengthen relations with our local, state, and federal elected officials and to advocate on behalf of the district with respect to potential legislation that may impact the district and our stakeholders. And really, the reason for that is because we are foregoing the services of a consultant or a state lobbyist for the proposed fiscal year. So, there's no lobbyist included in this budget. One of the items that I do wanna keep you apprised to is, one of the issues that we are engaged in is on the issue of representation at the Met. These are ongoing conversations and hopefully, this is an issue that does not rise to the legislative consideration. Should there be a necessity, we would come back to you for that. But at this point, we do not see the necessity to include a lobbyist for the upcoming fiscal year. And this is really an example where we're looking at only budgeting items where they are deemed necessities. With regards to memberships, this is inclusive of our chambers of commerce and contract cities at nine thousand dollars. With regards to contract cities, this is where we engage with our local elected officials. Through chambers of commerce, we engage the business community and promote awareness of the district. What we do with the chambers of commerce, for example, is when we get an RFP, in addition to posting it on our website and our social media, we send it to our chambers of commerce and ask them if they have groups or businesses that are interested in applying for that particular RFP, as well as seeking opportunities to present to them through our speakers bureau. Lastly, is meeting expense. And this is for participation in the Contract Cities Annual Seminar. What we do is we provide an exhibit booth at the annual seminar, which is held next month. And also, with regards to state-of-the-city events, where it is determined where it should, where it is determined that there should be a staff present at a state-of-the-city type of event, the district would purchase a ticket, not a sponsorship, but a ticket, should there be a determination. For example, the chambers of commerce will host a state-of-the-city event and if it's key for us to be, one, to engage with local elected officials or professional staff or other community members, then we would send a staff member. So, that's really what that expense within government relations is looking towards. Lastly, with regards to communications and outreach and events, this is gonna be a key area because over the past two years, really, the focus has been engaging with the state auditor to complete the audit, the work that the board and staff did to complete all the recommendations of the audit. And really, now the opportunity is, we've talked about rebranding, but really, I think, well, that's a technical term. We really start thinking about, really, the renaissance of an organization, the renewed vigor because we know that through the work that the board and staff have done over the past two years, there's been improved relations with our retailers and there's been improved relations with our legislators. Now, really is the focus to really go out and spread the, you know, spread positive perception of the district within the community. And this can be done through some of the venues within communications, outreach, and events. Overall, this is, overall, this is a decrease last year of eight percent or nine thousand nine hundred dollars from last year's adopted budget. What we have here is funding for graphic and website management services in the amount of forty-eight thousand dollars. And really, this is an example where the district has reduced costs by taking a large part of these services in-house. The majority of these services, or the vast majority of these services are now being done in-house. For example, several years ago, a typical contract for graphic and website management services would be in the area of a hundred and twenty thousand annually. Then, we would reduce that to seventy-five thousand annually. Now, we're looking, we have an RFP out there in which we're looking to expend forty thousand dollars annually. The eight thousand dollar difference would be for graphic design services as needed because that's also another service that we've taken in-house. With regards to printing costs, within the Department of External Affairs, we are tasked with printing several of the district's informational inserts. So, for example, whenever we're going out and speaking with folks, we make sure that our directors or our staff have one of these folders plus informational inserts and/or publications such as our CAFR. So, really, that's what that expenditure would go towards. Moving forward, with regards to advertising, we're looking at funding in the amount of nine thousand six hundred in several key core areas. So, for example, if there's an opportunity to advertise for Water Awareness Month or Earth Day, press release distribution. And the reason behind press release distribution is certainly you send it out to reporters, to your chambers, to your local elected officials. But by going through a press release distribution service, you're able to get that logged onto Google. So, whenever someone types in Central Basin, that pops up at the top. So, there's a reason behind press release distribution. Local media advertisements where necessary, and also including some funding for support of recycled water marketing. So, that's what we're looking at in terms of advertising. Moving forward, with regards to meeting expense, the district throughout the year hosts a variety of venues to engage our stakeholders on water issues. That's inclusive of the Central MWD Caucus, which is actually a partnership between us and upper district. This is a caucus that's held on a monthly basis. There are some times throughout the year in which the caucus is not held. Our inspection trips, our partnership with the Metropolitan Water District, those are six trips a year. Two to the Diamond Valley Lake, two to the Colorado River, and two to the State Water Project. While it's a partnership, our responsibility for the whole trip is only inclusive of the breakfast when attendees arrive here. The rest of that is covered by Met. Our water education tours, we're budgeting for eight to- fully comprised board. That's where we engage our stakeholders and we talk to them water from a more regional level. We bring down individuals. We talk to them about Central Basin's role in the water delivery system. We take them on a tour of the sanitation districts of Los Angeles County. We take them by the Rio Hondo Pump Station. And then, to gain some context, we, if possible, we take them to one of our recycled water customers. Oh, my apologies.
Are these scheduled normally on an annual basis? Or do they, are some of them increased on various years? In other words, you try to keep them the same each year or do they increase on certain years?
With respect to the Met trips, those, we work with Met and they give us dates and then we work with the Met directors to figure out what dates work best for them. So, those are six trips annually, two to each of those areas. With regards to the water education tours, the goal is to have one annually per director.
One annually per director?
Yeah, and so what we do is then is we work with the director to find a date that works for them. With regards to outreach expenses, funding in here is in the amount of thirty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars. And what's covered in here is the district's bottled water donation program. Courier services and courier services, as Maggie had spoken about, is FedEx services. For example, when we are asked to provide items to an event but where there may not be a staff presence and it's not possible for either the organization or a staff member to drop that off, we courier the items over. Or for larger scale items, for example, the Contract Cities, if they, we go and we're getting, setting up a whole booth and it would not, it would not be feasible for a staff member to take that all in their car. We get that couriered over. So, that is what courier services with respect to external affairs covers. Lastly, with regards to sponsorships. As a result of the audit, there was really a change with regards to how the district handles sponsorships. Now, when we look at them, we look at them to really have a water nexus. So, from the amount of events that we used to sponsor in the past till we have sponsored now has been reduced significantly. So, for example, two of the items that we're looking to sponsor next year really are only Earth Day for sanitation districts and the W R D Groundwater Festival because they have a direct water correlation. With regards to requests for sponsorship, as a result of the audit, the district's sponsorship policy was changed. Whereas it was, each director was provided a certain amount to sponsor on an annual basis. Now, what we do is we budget, as a result of the new policy, we budget ten thousand dollars. And what would happen is it would have to have a water nexus and then it would have to have a requirement where there either be an opportunity for Central Basin to have a booth there and/or a speaking presence. So, there needs to be a presence there. And the budget amount for that, the max, is two hundred dollars per event per annual basis. So, I know that there's some questions about how the district handles sponsorships now. That's the way that that's handled now in contrast to how it was handled in the past. And that's really as a result of the audit.
So your $38,900, I'm looking at the screens as bottled water
Yes.
... sponsorships.
Yes.
How much of that is bottled water and how much of that is sponsorship?
Of that, with regards to bottled water, we're looking to budget $22,500. Courier services at $2,400. Sponsorships for Earth Day, $2,500. Sponsorships for WRD Groundwater Festival, $1,500. And the, I guess, the newly defined outreach policy or sponsorship policy, $10,000.
I'm sorry, I'm very slow.
Oh, no, no.
Say that again?
Sponsorships?
Yes. No, 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 the entire, 38,900 was based on, how much was water?
$22,500 is for bottled water. $2,400 is courier services. Now, when we get into sponsorships, we're talking about $2,500 for Earth Day, that's sanitation districts, $1,500 for WRD Groundwater Festival, $10,000 for the newly defined sponsorship policy.
And that's in the admin code?
Yes, that's in the administrative code.
And is that a reduction from last year?
I'm sorry?
Is that a reduction from last year, or this current year, excuse me?
From the current year. Give me one second, Director. It's an overall reduction to this program area. The, where there are reductions are with regards to specific sponsorships. The
Right, that's okay, but is the 119,000?
Oh, the 119,000 is an overall reduction of
I'm sorry, you meant, is the 119,900, is that a reduction?
That's a reduction of 8% or $9,900 from last year's adopted budget.
Okay, I have a question on that.
Yes, Director.
Last year, okay, you're saying we were down 8% reduction in the overall, but we don't have a lobbyist here, and last year we were paying $10,000 a month for a lobbyist. 8% doesn't seem like that balances what we're giving up on the state
That's for that program area. The overall reduction for External Affairs overall is $145,000. What I'm doing is I'm going through program area.
Okay.
What I want to do is give you a context of each of the things that we do and kind of how that's budgeted. But the overall, the overall reduction is $145,000 from last year's adopted budget.
Is that the 8% we're talking about?
No, that's 8% for that program area.
For just that program?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes. The overall reduction from last year's adopted budget is 14%.
Okay, so then that would cover the lobbyists then?
That would cover the lobbyists.
Not getting this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Alrighty. So, one of the things that we did, and as Maggie had talked about, is there were several discussions as we developed a draft budget. This represents a reduction of $125,000 from where we started earlier this year to where we're at presenting to you here today, directors. And what that represents is a reduction in professional development for staff, a reduction of 20% in travel expenditures, the elimination of a state lobbyist for the proposed fiscal year, a reduction in, a reduction in consulting costs for website management and graphic design, a reduction in memberships, a reduction in courier services, and lastly, a reduction in education programs and printing.
Joseph, I have a question.
Yes, Director.
Thanks for the overview and presentation on this, but going back to the state lobbyist, which I believe I heard was $10,000 per month
Yes.
For a number of issues, correct? A number of different issues which could impact the district?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, given the fact, and you mentioned that the representation at Met is something we're going to keep our eyes on very closely, do you have an estimate at this time, or would you be able to develop an estimate of what it might cost for a lobbyist specifically to that question? In other words, representation at Met and kind of moving that forward as that develops. But do you have any kind of an estimate if we did need to get a lobbyist?
We're looking at about $5,000 a month.
Well, excuse me. You have two directors at Metropolitan that represent you. Why would you, why would you want lobbyists?
It's a state, it's a state issue. The act has to get changed. Now, is, we were, and our strategy in this is that if we can get support of Met in general, and we have the city of LA already thanks to a good dinner we were able to have with them, the city of LA's support, if we can get Met's support in general, then Met can use their lobbyists and we don't have to hire one. If there's controversy in the Met thing, if Met is a little neutral, and the San Diego thing is what creates the problem there, but Orange County is also going to be a problem on this. If there's a controversy at Met, then we have to have our own lobbyists to do that. We will know about that till we get farther in.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. We have, we really have a great many lobbying services, our membership with Gateway Water Management Authority, our membership with Central with Aqua, membership through California Special Districts. We pay tremendous membership fees, they have lobbyists, they have access to lobbyists. We need to be utilizing these services. And Joseph attends and is in contact with many of these folks that are going on. We don't need a lobbyist until we see an issue there.
Well, my understanding is, is, you know, given the current representation, as things evolve over time, that's something I think, and it's been presented to Director Vasquez and myself, is something we definitely want to keep our eye on. This is one option. I just want to make sure for full transparency and presentation at the board that if we do decide that we want to have a lobbyist specific to this issue, that is presented at this time.
We've had one lobbyist offer to do that for us for about $5,000.
Okay. So, and that, that was the goal of my question, so if we have to make an adjustment, that'll come back to all of us and we'll vet the whole issue.
Exactly.
We'll make sure to be nimble on that issue as it develops. So if there's a necessity, we will come back to the board and have that discussion with you.
It'd be premature to budget it right now because we may be able to There's also a slight chance that eight years ago, General Manager Kuytlinger said that he thought he could do it without changing the act. If he can do that, great, so.
And again, we're just, we're veritably in the question. I just want to make sure that down the road, two months, three months, six months, you know, everyone's aware that this started at this time and we don't have any, you know, ongoing questions, how did this happen, where did this come from, et cetera, et cetera. I want to make sure we're fully transparent on the process.
Thank you.
Joseph, a couple of quick questions.
Of course, yes, Director.
Why do we pay our grants consultant?
We, they are in a, currently they are in a retainer of $5,000 per month. And the way that that's processed is they'll submit an invoice, but that invoice lists all the services that they had provided for the month before.
So is there one consultant or?
It's one consultant.
Well, it's a firm?
It's a firm. Oh, it's a firm, yeah.
I meant a firm, right.
Yeah, the firm is Townsend Public Affairs.
Okay, thank you. And the other question is, have we approached the school districts to partner with, you know, STEM and focus on STEM, science, technology, engineering, math is a big issue now. A number of districts are focusing on that, partnering with different organizations. Can we seek the possibility of partnering with them and having them include in their curriculum some focus on the type, the type of things that we go out to them? So have them directly do that for their students rather than us going to them?
Okay.
Just one suggestion.
No, no, I appreciate that. That's something that we can speak amongst staff to figure out, you know, if that's something we can move forward with. I appreciate the suggestion.
Yeah, Mark, your boss is our expert on that, and when I talk, there are certain things that the state mandates if you have in the curriculum that because of the water supply.
Right, right.
And the problem is, it probably doesn't cover, because it's statewide, enough specific about our region and some of that. And the whole issue of how we define our school programs, ours, I didn't create it, I just, husband did for the last couple of years, but it is very well-known statewide for being a very effective one. It's liked by the teachers, but every time you look at the budget, there's a question is, should we be doing water education? And the answer usually comes back yes, but I think in my prior job, we outsourced it when I was there in Discovery Science Center to do it. Wasn't any cheaper in the long run.
Thank you.
Thank you, Directors.
Good morning, Directors. So I'll be giving an update for Engineering Operations this afternoon or this morning. And so Engineering Operations is responsible for the district's recycled water distribution system, expanding recycled water service, and managing capital projects. Today, I'll be providing an overview on budgets for three categories under Engineering Operations, and I'll provide an overview of each of those three categories in more detail. And to start off, those three are, one, Engineering and Operations, two, the Water Quality Protection Plan, more commonly called the WQPP, and the third is Recycled Water Customer Development. And the draft fiscal year 1718 Engineering Operations budget, which includes all three categories together, is $3,518,555. So moving into the first category, which is for General Engineering and Operations, this includes expenses for staffing and department operations, the district's recycled water distribution system, and technical consulting needs related to operations. And so for Engineering Operations specifically, expenses are currently budgeted at $2,651,355. And so the main accounts listed here are for staffing of four full-time employees, two interns, and one retired annuitant. Permitting and licenses for our recycled water distribution system, operating permits with the State Water Resources Control Board and the Los Angeles County Fire Department. Supervisory control and data acquisition, or SCADA, telephone and data expenses, and this includes costs for communication services for all the district's pump stations. Leases and easements are costs paid to other agencies such as Southern California Edison, the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, and the City of Whittier. And this is to allow the district to own and operate recycled water facilities and pipelines within their property boundaries. One thing I would like to inform the board about specifically today is that the lease for the Rio Hondo Pump Station, this item is currently budgeted at $65,000. We're currently receiving an annual credit from the City of Whittier in the amount of $167,314 for the lease for the property. And this is because our neighbor, WRD, over at the Rio Hondo Pump Station is currently using a majority of that property for construction staging, and they also are operating a pilot plant on-site as well for their own project. And so I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that this credit does expire December, end of December 2018, which means that costs for leases will go up for the next budget. Another main item for Engineering and Operations in general is
Director, what is the credit amount again? And is that included in this year's budget in terms of the reduction in leases?
It is reduced in this year's budget.
Next year, or when it expires, that would go up approximately $160,000?
You are correct.
Okay.
And the discussion with him, we're saying December of 2018, because that's the deadline when the project is supposed to be complete. It may extend longer, in which case we'll go month by month, but next year for budgeting, we'll budget for half of that coming back, just to be prudent.
Right. The next main category is to cover repairs and maintenance, and this includes costs for wheeling recycled water from the Los Coyotes Reclamation Plant through the City of Ceritos Pump Station, SCADA system development or repairs for Central Basin's property, and smaller repairs under $5,000. And just to give an example of this, and this would be a small repair, every now and then we get calls about residents accidentally driving into our air vacuum cans out on the sidewalks. And so we use that money to repair them and other repairs as needed. We also have another category for conferences, mileage, and travel. And so budgeted line items are for conference costs for four staff members, and this is to attend one to two conferences in the upcoming fiscal year. And this account also includes annual mileage expenses for seven people. And memberships for this category include a membership with the Water Reuse Association, which is actually the main expense coming in at $10,000. Continuing with the General Engineering and Operations category, which is the first category, we have consulting services budgeted for operations-related needs throughout the year, and this is to cover technical needs as they come up. Just, I wanted to make a note here that staff will be transparent with consulting services. Services will be procured as needed following district policies and procedures, and all services will be approved by the general manager and reported at committee and board meetings.
Becky, can you give me an example of what those consulting services have been having?
Yes, sir, Mark. One example is over at the Rio Hondo Pump Station, we had been having, and this was a year or so, a couple of years back, we were having issues with communications between pumps, and a lot of the pumps were having a problem staying on the sequence and alternating how they were, they were supposed to be operating essentially. And so at first, we thought it was electrical needs, and we did end up having some electrical problems for that, so we had to have someone come out and look into that, do a study. In actuality, what happened was, it was a problem with the PLC programming, so we had to run a simulation, fix all the bugs, debug it, and then re-download it into the PLC to have them start to function and communicating properly. That's an example.
Maintenance company wasn't able to provide you with anything?
Well, they're involved to a certain extent, but they don't budget for that in their own, because it's considered an unknown yes.
They don't, yeah, and some of these, we have, it's not a complex system, but it does have three pump stations that are operational and a number of air release and pressure control valves and that, and some of these, we occasionally run into situations that require a little bit of special expertise that's beyond what they have. Could be anything from a cathodic protection expertise to control system expertise or structural expertise.
Do we have a list of those in case we're going forward so that we can call them?
A list of the
Of those types of expertise?
Well, we can certainly get that for you. You'll be seeing
We don't have a set list that we use.
What I mean is, is you learn, your operations are doing an operation. That's fine, that's what they do. But if they run into an electrical problem where they need an expert to come out and work on the electrical panel, then they turn you and say, this is an electrical problem. So then you would normally turn to your list of approved electrical consultants, I guess. Have you guys started developing those on your own?
We don't have a formal list, but we do have lists that we've collected over the years on who we've reached out to before in the past. So say if we needed to look into, as Kevin mentioned
But having a formal list is a good idea.
It is a great idea, and we'll definitely start implementing
Prequaling them?
That procedure.
Technically, just technically prequaling them so that you know if you have a vibration problem, who are your options to call in case one guy isn't available?
Yeah.
I would think anyone that's working for you that has wells, pumps, booster pumps, variable drives, SCADA system, that they would have lists of those because they're relying on them for their own system. And, you know, that's something that you can reach out to, to the pumpers and we can provide you that information. I see that, something that I saw in the RFP, and I see this as, as that being our responsibility if our operations people are saying we're having a specific problem there, that then we would then call our list of specialists and say, we need, we have a need for X to come out and take a look at the panel and get back to us to what we need to do. So, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so moving on to the next category, and this is still under General Engineering Operations, we also have costs for contractors. This includes operations and maintenance specifically of the district's recycled water distribution system. And so this is the area where we budget for Liberty Utilities right now at this time.
Jack, this is the one that the RFP is going to go?
Correct.
So it's $800,000, a different number than the current contract amount?
No, that's based off the current contract. So it's subject to change.
Are you talking on WQPP?
Yes, sir.
Refresh my memory, but it seems like we were working on something where that would become revenue neutral or debit neutral. Or is that still in the works, or is that still something that's possible?
The way WQPP is ran is any expenses that come to the district, the rates are to be adjusted to make it revenue neutral. So in the end, we won't be making any revenue or expending any money.
I knew we were working on something there and I could remember.
I'm not sure if you're referencing the study that we were looking at for decommissioning the GAC filters that were there?
Well, it seemed like we were running a deficit and we didn't, we wanted, we were considering shutting it down at one time, and then we said, no, we can possibly work with somebody and then we can neutralize this thing all out, and I don't know where that ever went.
Actually, Director, what happened was the opposite, we adjusted the rates and developed the surplus. So for the last couple of years, we've actually been working down the surplus, and this year we're finally going to be full cost balanced, right?
Right, we're revisiting it.
Yeah, so. But we have not been losing money on it, which is what I ask every time. The only thing we're doing a little different, we didn't bill for our time.
Right.
Are we doing that in this year's budget?
We will be capturing that, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. The next item, still under General Engineering and Operations, is for electricity expenses. Payments to Southern California Edison under this account are for district pump stations, lighting at the district's pressure-reducing station in Norwalk, and to cover a portion of the electricity costs for Ceritos Pump Station.
I might, if Albert has a minute here, this is a big area where I might, if Albert has a minute here, this is a big area where, we came down through discussions by Jackie, Albert, and Lonnie, and we talked to the Edison folks, and our load is what, 512 kilo-
For Rio Hondo specifically.
17 kilowatts of Rio Hondo. If we get it below 500, we can save $60,000 a year. Now, it's a timing issue whether we'll get any benefit this year's budget, but they're working on it right now, and we hope to have a way of doing that in time for, say, next year's budget, get that savings in.
Right. I think it has to be shown a reduction for 12 months straight to be able to put into a different category for a rate reduction, but we're also, and we, Albert, heavily involved in running that, is we're looking at other options as well.
Kevin, would that require, like, pumping of some kind?
No, it's strictly, you know, it's funny, we, to do our free pump, and we need storage, and we don't have any in the system, which would-
Right.
No, actually, this is just figuring out, we actually have two meters on the site. If we can, if one meter has no demand on it, and the other one has it all, if we can switch some demand to that meter, it meets the deal. It's that simple.
Let's go switch it out.
We're trying, that's what we're looking at right now.
Actually, one of the things I'm looking at right now, Director, is to actually move some of the power sources. The other thing I'm trying to do as well is, we can submit to Edison to see if we can get, if we can show a significant change being made, we may be able to see some savings in this next fiscal year as well. We can, it's at their discretion, but if we can show significant changes, they may move us to the new rate structure.
So you're not looking at purchasing storage units, you're looking at, literally just looking at your rate structure?
Yeah, we have a meter, what's interesting about the side, sorry if I get too detailed, is we have two meters side by side. One meter has no load, the other meter takes the full load of the entire pump station.
Are the meters the same size? Can the meters handle?
That is what we're checking on, but they are the same size.
Are they both hooked up?
They, the breakers are all there, it's, it can take a power load, yes, sir. And they're, Edison's recording monthly metering on it, and they're showing zero, zero load, so it's an active meter.
Do you have any idea why there were two meters stuck there?
I am trying to figure out why there was two meters side by side, so I have not got a good answer for that yet.
That was down quite a while ago, though, right?
I've seen where those two meters, one's being used as three-phase, and the other one's being used as residential, but you believe that these are both three-phase meters?
Yes, sir, there's a zero load on the other side. It looks like maybe it was put in as a backup source, that's what I originally thought.
A backup meter?
A backup source, maybe for doing some sort of backup powering or alternative-
You know, we're just speculating. Way before our time.
If I may ask, when is the next engineering subcommittee meeting?
Fourth?
May 4th.
So perhaps these things in detail can be discussed at that level?
Yeah, we intend to do that, sir.
We'll make sure that we do bring in item before the committee.
Thank you.
As to the cost of electricity, I know every, probably November, December, Southern California Edison sends a notice about the increase in their rates. This figure is inclusive of-
They sent us a full report for our use.
Right. Thank you.
So, moving back, okay, so after electricity, the next item that is on this slide, which is the second of the three categories, is addressing the Water Quality Protection Plan, or the WQPP. It is budgeted as its own separate project. WQPP was originally a federally funded project that consists of two groundwater wells in the city of Pico Rivera, and water is provided to the city of Santa Fe Springs specifically right now, occasionally to Pico Rivera, and it has the capability to serve Whittier, however, they've never taken any water to date. Budgeted items for the WQPP include Whittier operations and maintenance costs, along with expenses related to system communications, electricity, water quality analysis, and leases and easements for the two wells and the filters for treatment that are over on, actually right next door to Rio Hondo Pump Station. And as I had mentioned earlier, water rates to the three cities are to be adjusted to cover costs to the district making WQPP a revenue-neutral project. The third and final category for engineering and operations is for customer development, and costs to the district for recycled water customer development that are not included in the draft capital improvement plan, or under the general engineering and operations category, are covered separately by this account. More specifically, the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health, plan review and inspection fees, the recycled water campaign, which is currently under development and will be introduced later on this year, smaller items such as recycled water, "Do Not Drink" signage, and this is signage that we use at our own facilities, and occasionally we hand it out to our purveyors should they need it if they're working on a project. And as we've progressed through the initial budgeting process, and I'm moving away from the three categories right now, staff in engineering and operations have identified ways to reduce department expenses, and so the amount that we've been able to identify totals $255,223. And studies for operations have been deferred, so I'm going to get into the details for that. Expenses for O&amp;M contractors working on customer development-related projects that were not previously captured as capital expenses were moved from operations over to the district's capital plan. So to provide a little bit more detail, we used to budget for, under the Liberty Contract for customer development, we've moved some of those costs over under the capital budget where they were more appropriately fit to be. And conferences and training and travel experienced across, or experienced across the board, 20% reduction. And lastly, staff were able to eliminate service expenses for the district's GIS program, and this was by bringing work in-house to be handled by an intern with a heavy amount of GIS experience. So this is Jordan Cooper, us bringing him on board. And so that's enabled us to make quite a bit of reductions in that area. And that concludes my update, unless you have any questions for me, directors?
All righty, good morning. Want to provide you an update on the water resources and the budget areas here that we're responsible for. So Water Resources is responsible for providing water supply reliability by planning future water use and managing current demands and implementing conservation programs. The total amount for our budget here is $766,613. Breakdown of the budget, we have three full-time employees, and we have one part-time retired annuitant. Another share in our budget is $130,000 that we plan to contribute towards our conservation grant match this upcoming year. So with regard to the budget breakdown, the majority of our costs fall into this category, which is $163,413. And I'll go through these programs and provide you more of a background. So the first one right now is a water master fee. The expenses we're budgeting here is $91,050. This is for the annual report that all of the directors get every year. And I'll give you a description, involvement, and then the value here. So this is the San Gabriel River Water Master Annual Fee that we're responsible for paying. This is to represent the water supply of the San Gabriel River System, which is divided at the Whittier Narrows, which is a boundary between San Gabriel Valley upstream and Los Angeles County downstream. And this pertained to the Long Beach Judgment that was entered in 1965, and it was provided an adjudication of the upper and lower areas of the San Gabriel River Supply. Our involvement is that the river water masters comprised of three neutral members, one representing the upper area parties, which is nominated by the Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District, and one is representing the lower area parties nominated by the Central Basin Municipal Water District, and then the third is representing upper and lower jointly nominated by both districts. And the value, the water management benefits of Long Beach Judgment, it allows the upper and lower areas to each manage their own basins. It allows LA County to optimize stormwater spreading in real time, and provides the lower area with historic water supply and entitlement. Moving on for, is there any questions? I'll just go ahead and move on. With respect to the meeting and printing expenses, we have a total of $4,800 that we're planning to include for our budget next year. This includes, the majority of it is $4,000 to cover the monthly purveyor workshops, and this is a monthly meeting, and this is to cover the lunch expense of about $330 each month. Also included in this is the quarterly luncheon for the Central Basin Water Association. This is for staff members to attend four different meetings that they hold throughout the year. Also included is $150 for the Southern California Water Committee Quarterly Meetings. This is not to attend all of them, but maybe a couple throughout the year. And then $500 is allocated towards the printing of our annual water use report that we provide every month. And the next category for the memberships, it includes a breakdown here of six different areas, and I can go ahead and provide you a description, again, the involvement and the value for the district as this falls into a membership category. First one is the Association of California Water Agencies. This, as we all know, is a statewide association comprised of public water agencies. This association functions as an effective forum for developing consensus on statewide policy issues. Our involvement is that several staff members and board members attend the semi-annual conferences, and the value is that directors and staff have an opportunity to participate in forums and become informed of statewide and industry issues that could have an impact on the district's service area. The next category is the San Gabriel Valley Protective Association. We're looking at including $27,408 in the next year's budget. This is a nonprofit that was formed for the primary purpose of protecting the water rights of users of the San Gabriel River water. Under the terms of the Long Beach Judgment that I mentioned earlier, between the upper area and lower area of the San Gabriel River, the upper area guarantees a certain amount of water that will flow across the Whittier Narrow to the lower area. And the San Gabriel Valley Protective Association contracts with the local university to measure the well to determine the effectiveness of the spreading water, and most of the membership fees collected by the association are to pay for that service. Our involvement is that we have one Central Basin Director that represents the district in this organization. Central Basin pays an annual assessment based on the amount of groundwater pumped each year, and there are two membership levels. One is a producer member, one is the associate member. The producers include the Central Basin Municipal Water District, San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District, Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District, the Water Replenishment District, and the City of Glendora. These agencies pay an assessment of 30 cents per acre foot of the flow of the San Gabriel River. So Central Basin and the Water Replenishment District split the flow between the two agencies and pay the $27,408 annually. So the value is that the San Gabriel Valley Protective Association provides groundwater level data on over 100 wells to the Los Angeles County Flood Control District. The Protective Association appoints a distribution committee made up of its members, which meets with the county to determine where spreading would be most effective to maintain groundwater aquifers. Moving on to the next item for the Gateway Water Management Authority. The Gateway Water Management Authority is part of the Los Angeles Integrated Regional Water Management Joint Powers Authority, made up of cities and water districts within the Gateway region of the southeast Los Angeles County. And the Gateway Authority is chair for the Lower San Gabriel Subregion of the Greater Los Angeles Integrated Regional Water Management Leadership Committee. These regional planning groups address water resources needs while identifying state and federal funding opportunities in an effort to enhance water supply reliability. Our involvement is that the district has significantly increased its effort to identify and secure grant opportunities. This includes participation in continued development of the Integrated Regional Water Management Program. Last year, the district successfully completed implementation of the Prop 50 Water Education and Management Program, of which the district was awarded $900,000 in grant funds. The value is through the Integrated Regional Water Management Planning Effort, the district was recently awarded over $1.5 million in Proposition 84 funding for two programs. That is for the Southeast Water Efficiency Program, for the Water Efficiency Conservation Device retrofit, and then also the Gateway Cities Regional Recycle Water Expansion Project. Next item?
Are you finished with that one? Because I want to go back to Water Master.
Yes.
Kevin, Water Master has almost doubled in the last few years, and they don't do any more than they used to do. Do we have any say-so or any input? Because we're paying 1/3, and our 1/3 is now $91,000. Director, I wasn't aware of that. I'll check into it, frankly. I missed that one. It used to be 50, and we thought that was high.
That's correct. And I have a little bit of a breakdown here, starting back from 2010 and '11, it was $53,560.
Yeah, and now all of a sudden, it's almost double.
2011, 2012, they kept that same price, you're right. 2012, '13, they, they raised it slightly by $54,384, so that was a 1.5% increase. 2013 and '14, they increased it by 15%, it was $62,624,000. 2014, it was $65,096, a little bit of a more increase. 2015 and '16, it was $74,572, almost a 15% increase. 2016, '17, this year, we're paying $87,344.
Tell me, the point, the point is that the trend is upward as the director actually called down, and we should look into that and see why.
Right, yeah.
Is it succeeding inflationary rate?
Right. I have had conversations with them because they, you know, they provide justification as far as why there, there's been so much of an increase. Mainly is because of the drought and much lower groundwater levels, and they provide a very detailed technical analysis as far as drilling down into lower, to the static wells.
See, that's what they say. But if you look at it, they take the county report after they've all, they change a little bit of it, and that's what we get as a report. So that's why I see this as a lot of money for what they do. Yeah, so that's why I was just wondering if we had any input with these people or not.
We definitely do.
Okay.
And I've had conversations with them as well, too, as far as expressing that concern, and they are, right now, saying that next year's budget will be closer to what we're paying right now, it won't be so much of a significant increase as what we've seen in the past few years. There's no guarantee of that, but however, I'm just putting a little bit more of a buffer in there just in case. But we'll continue to have those conversations with them.
Well, I'm just afraid they're going to continue this. If we don't say something, or if we don't have any input into it, it'll just keep increasing.
Exactly, and I've had discussion with one of the board members there, and they did bring it up at their last discussion. They meet to discuss memberships for their board meeting in February, so that, our concern with Central Basin and questions regarding the budget that was raised.
Right, maybe this is where Kevin could talk to Upper and WRD, because they're in the same situation we are. We'll do that, we'll report back to you on that, Director, that's it. Okay, let's wrap this, let's get on with it.
Okay, thanks. So the next item would be the Urban Water Institute. This is for $1,250 for a yearly membership, and the institute is made up of public agencies and private firms with particular emphasis on water economics, management, and resource policies. This is a nonprofit organization that sponsors various workshops and conferences. Our involvement is that district staff and directors attend these conferences. The value is that the membership benefits offer discounted rates to conferences and workshops, along with opportunities to interact in discussion groups with key professionals in the water industry. And then the final item was the Central Basin Water Association. We're including $55 for the annual membership. The Central Basin Water Association is composed of groundwater rights holders that include municipalities and private utilities. The association provides a forum for members to discuss current water rights, issues, and policies. Our involvement is that it includes participation at their board meetings, along with quarterly member luncheons. The district is responsible for providing regular updates pertaining to imported water supply issues and developments. And the value is that membership in the Central Basin Water Association provides the district an opportunity to engage with its members and to keep updated on local water issues. And so regarding a reduction from our initial draft budget, we have four areas that we are looking at, we have reduced travel and conferences, we made a reduction of over 25%. Promotional items and incentives, we have 100% elimination. We do, we find that there is no need to purchase any promotional items, we provide additional incentive. Due to the recent grant that we just finished with the Prop 50, we have some items that are left over and will carry into our next grant that we'll be implementing on Prop 84. We reduced some hours for our part-time retired and new tenant by about 17%. And then lastly, our grant conservation match, it was a 13% reduction. We had initially planned to include 150- We had initially planned to include $150,000 for our grant match, and we have brought that down to $130,000. And that will be able to keep the program running at a good rate throughout the year. That concludes everything for the Water Resources Department, unless there are any other questions? I'd be happy to answer. Okay, thank you.
Last one, directors, I promise. I'll be presenting to you the Information Technology, IT and Building Services budget for the year. IT is responsible for operating all of our technology services, maintaining the district's information systems, and ensuring security services and building operations. I also handle all the communication devices for the district, including our SCADA system. Looking at the budget as a whole, our total budget for the, our total proposed budget for the year is $818,171. It's broken into two departments. Department of Administration, which includes the two full-time equivalents, salaries and benefits, and including some small travel charges. And then the bulk of it is in the IT and Building Services Department, $568,000. That's broken down into a couple different areas. Building Services, which includes all of our security, janitorial, basically all of our service-oriented items, $40,500. $48,000 for electricity cost. Our property insurance, this is our general property insurance, which includes our pipelines, roughly $15 million in total coverage for the district at $79,950. Lease expenses, the bulk of the lease expenses are related to the Edison lot, the lot that's attached to our district's property, in addition to some copiers, binding machines, mail machines, things of that nature. Permits and licensing, that's $167,000. It's a big number, but that's really related to five major pieces of software that take up 80% of that budget. That includes our finance system, our GIS software, our asset management software, our Microsoft agreement, and our Laserfish software. And then lastly, under repairs and maintenance, $32,000. This is just the day-to-day general repairing things as they break, R&amp;R-type service. Before I go on to the next portion, did you guys, did anybody have any questions?
Do you know how much is the lease for SE?
Yes, sir. It is, if we renew, we're looking to renew in December. This next fiscal year would be 30, just under $30,000.
For what?
For the year. Yes, sir. And based on Edison's, discussions with Edison, anticipating the next question, they are not willing to negotiate that price as a general policy. And looking at future years, the only thing that I've managed to get them to agree to that's out of the ordinary is they typically have a 5% riser. We are working on a 3% riser from year to year.
And if we didn't lease this from them, what are they going to do with this one? With this piece of property?
It's not this property, it's the secondary parking portion. The reason, the need for that area is for overflow parking when we have events and...
Right, but if they didn't lease that from them, what would they do with it? Can they have it restored?
Absolutely nothing, and that's one of my major issues.
Useless.
They use it as a communication tower site, so they're making additional funds off of that as well.
Director, the whole issue of leases, this and some of the pipeline leases, is something we're going to get into more in the next year.
We talked on that yesterday.
Yeah, there's just hundreds of thousands in leases that were coming across, and we've got to figure out a way to get the costs under control and the restrictions removed on some of them.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Moving on. As every other department did with their initial budget, you're not going to see huge reductions in my department. There's only two of us, there's not a lot, and there's not a lot of discretionary expenditures in there. But we did manage to find reductions as a result of the recent lease that was approved for copiers. We also have staff training and education that we reduce, as well as membership and certifications and conference and travel. One other item I forgot to mention, I'm sorry. Under the building maintenance and repair, we did add, you may recall the item that came up with our sewage pipeline. I did add the additional $5,000 in annual service to help try to mitigate those, mitigate the risk going forward. Thank you, directors.
Thank you. The last part of the operational budget is the legal costs. We have a budget of $330,000 proposed. I think it's a record low for the last 10 years. It's attributed to the fact that we, few directors, have cleaned up all of the litigation that we've had out there, other than we have the one Belkey case that we expect to be cleaned up in this fiscal year. And there's three firms involved. Nosman is general counsel, Nixon Peabody, the ethics hotline, which is a $16,200 cost, and Austin Byrd for the special counsel on the Keetan, which we have about $10,000 budgeted for next year as part of that, just keeping us informed.
Excuse me, so that was approximately $10,000 for Austin?
$16,200 for, and about $300,000 for Nosman.
Thank you.
And at this time, we've been at this for two hours, directors. I don't know if you want to take a break, have lunch, if you have the stamina. We've got, it will take about 45 minutes to an hour to go through the capital improvement projects, and that, it's a fairly complex thing. So the options we have is either take a break or not, and we can also reschedule for another hour if we wanted another time to work on capital projects. So to you folks, I don't know what your schedule is today.
Mr. Chair, I have no problem with you going. That's all right with the rest of the board.
You want to go on?
I have to leave at 12:30.
Then we should go on. He has to leave at 12:30.
I think this could be a very long portion. I think maybe we should reschedule just for that portion.
It could be. It's a significant undertaking, and it's a complex thing, so maybe we could, and again, it's up to see what the consensus is of the board. Some would like to go on, some would like to delay it, some have still 12:30.
Want to go until 12:30? Well, if they're not going to be finished, what's the...
No, we'll be, the other way I think we could do it is we have on May 4th is the Engineering Committee. We could use that to...
I think that's appropriate.
Add it into there and wrap up, make that concentrate in that meeting on the Capital Improvement Plan. Frankly, staff could use the time on that one, too.
Right.
So it's a pleasure of the board. We could stop right here, and then we'll wrap up on that. I'm trying to think if there's anything at the bottom line that I did want to hit. If we could click ahead past the capital, Albert? You got it there? Just going down to where we are at the end of, yeah. We talked about the expenses and the overview once before at the beginning of the thing. Keep going, Albert, one more. This is the bonds, again, the detail of the principal interest, in fact, so we can wrap up all of the operational costs. And then the next one, Albert. This is where we get our debt coverage ratio. As it stands right now, our revenues, our operating expenses, operating debt, the total expenses out, gives us a debt coverage ratio of just about 1.5. We can, we'll be getting it to there. Is that a good? No, that's minimal. Are there risks with it right now? As it was pointed out by Director Grahida, the replenishments issue is a big one as to where we are in that. That's probably our single biggest risk going forward. When you take all of our costs, including our principal payment and our staff time that is allocated to capital projects, we have a flat-out breakeven budget. Wouldn't be bad if that's what the type of operation you had, but that doesn't pay for any of the capital facilities. Now, we've already discussed, and we'll go through the capital budget in detail. On the capital facilities, we agreed all the larger ones would be done by funding that we will come up with, so that there's no, we're not asking for authorization for any of the larger capital projects at this time. We'll come to you with the funding plans. However, we will be coming back when we, with this, with costs for small capital projects for the repair and replacement of the system and for the hookups, and that's going to total roughly $1 million. So what we have with the budget right now requires that we take $1 million out of reserves. And again, is it taken out of reserves? We prefer to look at it as an investment. The projects, you have to maintain your system. The projects that we are proposing to bring forward, the small ones, have a very quick three-to-four-year payback period, so over the life of the district, it's a very good investment. And we'll present that when we go over the capital plan. So that's where we are at the end of the operational budget. We have, I got about 20 questions noted. Do you have, how many are you keeping in notes?
Excuse me, Kevin, how much, how much, how much is WRD's, in the total revenue, about $13 million, how much of that is WRD?
$1.75 million.
$1.75.
Yeah, so it's $25,000 acre feet at $70 an acre foot.
That's if we sell everything that's where you're projecting to sell.
Yeah, 25 for next year, yeah. And again, your risk on that, right now isn't the water availability, thank gosh. We've had that in the past. That's strictly the quagga issue.
And that does not include the 5,000 acre feet you're still trying to pump for this fiscal year?
Yeah, we have 5,000. If we cannot get it this year, and it doesn't look probable in terms of replenishment water, and maybe if we do the cyclic story, that would move into next year, netting in another $350,000 to our budget and move our debt coverage ratio up to about 1.8, 1.2, and which would be nice to have, and also it would decrease the deficit spending.
Kevin, with the proposed reduction of about $1 million from the reserves, what would be the remaining balance?
It'd still be about $12 million. We have, right now, in our operational reserve is, so $12.5 million. But we also have outstanding, significant amount of grant money. And when we report back in, I'll have that. So we still, we have about $12 million left in the bank. We try and meet at least a 90-day reserve. Right now, we have 103 days, so I'll calculate the days that we'd have left at that time, but, yeah. At this time, as you know, we're a little shorthanded. We don't have a CFO, and Doretta's out on, she's on Parsi Medical, so we don't have a full-time, a full staff there, but...
Kevin, is there somewhere that shows what the, and I'm sorry, overall reduction is from this budget, from the proposed budget this year?
Yeah, yeah. Do you remember where that is? It should be the next slide.
This one?
Go back. We showed an overall reduction somewhere.
$573,000.
Yeah, from the first budget we came out with, and now it's $573,000. We've identified, and again, this is a living document, just as Tammy was talking...
I'm sorry. You have the adopted budget of $65 million. What's the estimated budget?
Oh, for this one, the cost to complete? Yeah, it's in 50, about $51 million.
And then we're proposing $50,000, $50 million?
Yeah.
So we reduced costs approximately, I'm trying to compare...
The last year to this year?
Yeah.
I'll bring you that accurately, because that's a good comment.
Because I need to know, and it's not what we budget, because we know we're not going to hit that. We estimate the expenses and revenues are going to be, and then what you're looking at right now.
And there's some things that are unusual in this month, this year, in the expenses. The election cost of $800,000 are in here, the Belkey settlement of $425,000, so those, hopefully, we don't have next year, but they're going to be coming in the future, so...
So are we looking at the estimated actual for '17, which is about $51,168 change, and the proposed budget, which is $59,77, roughly about $200,000 differential? Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and we have, we're developing a final estimate for the last couple of months. I've got that on my desk right now. As I said, we're a little shorthanded in finance, but we're a lot short. But anyway, if it works for everybody, we will continue this on May 4th in the morning at the, matter of fact, and again, we'll do a survey of the directors and see, make sure everybody can make it, and we might start a little earlier if that works even, so we could add a little time in.
Is, are you and your staff looking at any further cuts, or do you think...
Yes, we are. I was just mentioning, one of the ones, for example, and it's part of the process. Tammy was mentioning about the matching funds for the grant. She went to the county, and Sandy, her work with the county, and they have agreed that we could match a different way than we were doing, and we're going to reduce our match from now from $130 to $105. Am I correct with that? So that's a $25,000 saving right there. We have, I don't know, Jackie, you just found some savings of 60, 50, 60,000. Did that get in this budget?
95,000.
Did not. So we have a bunch of things. We're still looking at stuff that we can do. We have assumed that all of the negotiations are complete. Upper San Gabriel are complete, Pico is complete, you know, the city of Pico Rivera, Vernon, we're still in process with, but that contract ends, and that should generate additional revenue, and that's not grounded in totally. So it's still a work in process, because there's things that are still going on. My goal is to get the debt coverage ratio up more into what we said we would do when we did the financial forecast a year ago, which was 1.18 for this year, I believe.
But you had mentioned something about, in terms of cutting certain programs back or making reductions that it'd have to go before committees, and that you'd like to approve this budget at the end of May. It seems to me that the board collectively would decide on what we want to cut out or not cut out.
Actually...
What if we miss, and what if we don't make the committee in the month of May, and it goes to June?
If it goes to June, then so be it. We can do it. The good thing in this year is that our rates don't change, which is the main thing that affects the retail agencies. So rates are set.
Right, I was going to mention that. If our rates aren't going to change going forward, which I don't know that anyone's discussed that, whether or not we approve our budget in a timely manner or not, wouldn't affect the purveyors, because they already know our rates are, correct?
Yeah, no, they already know what the rates are, and we discussed that with them. But again, it's still a courtesy in case there is any changes, because the board still has the authority to up the rates if you wanted to.
Well, if you're contemplating doing a rate study for next year, why would you increase rates this year without that rate study being done first?
I wouldn't.
Okay, no.
I'm saying the board has the discretion, I don't. But now, the issue of how we get to the budget we need to, and that, that's the purpose of this workshop and other runs. Board needs, we'll be there, staff, whatever you need us, whatever you need in a level of detail. At the end of the day, when you come up with a budget, then it's up to us as staff, me as the manager, to manage within that budget and move things around to keep, make the financial things. The only thing we've identified is risks coming out in the future. One is the replenishment issue. The second is a possible need for lobbyists. Only the rest of the year is fairly steady for the first time in a long time. We don't have a state audit in front of us, or, you know, things like that, so...
I think collectively, if we need lobbyists, that could come out of reserve funds if we collectively decided that. I don't think that's something that we need to budget.
Yeah, no, you don't. Like I said, frankly, I know Joseph would cringe when I say it, but I've seen him the last couple of months. He's been doing so well up there in Sacramento. I don't think we need lobbyists. We could just dress him up a little bit.
I think the amount of money we're paying for the memberships that we have, I don't know why we do need lobbyists. I think we can get, we have three or four lobbyists at our fingertips.
Yeah, and I think that's it. And this is, what we're talking about here is an issue that's motherhood and apple pie. It's additional representation for the 1.6 million people in our service area. It's preserving our two met directors, so... And we have talked over the last year when we've gone up to Sacramento, both on the bills and on this, we've always brought this issue up. Everyone from Speaker Rendon to Senate Majority Pro Tem De Leon, or all of our local people have opened supportive, having one that didn't understand the issue and didn't believe it. So it's a very powerful delegation there. So I think we'll be successful, and we, hopefully, we don't have to go back. And now, staff, I asked you, does anybody see any other risks out there that we haven't mentioned in terms of going into the next year that we should make the board aware?
I have one last question regarding the bonds. Is there, I guess there's always the potential of them being downgraded?
Yeah, no.
Downgraded, right?
Yeah, what happened with, we got a credit watch, we put on credit watch. That was as a result of actions in February. I've responded to that. Obviously, we're recruiting right now for a CFO. We have, how many resumes now?
14.
Do we get two more?
Yes, so 16.
16 resumes. Okay. And by the end of the month, we're going to sort through them and go through the process. We should have a CFO. That's one thing they were concerned about. They were also concerned about what's our cost to complete for the year? What's our year, end of the year going to look at? And we're working on that right now. They wondered about what's our budget for next year, which is what we're working on by now. And a couple other minor things. I've hired the firm of PFM Professional Financial Management out of LA to help us analyze that issue, and also analyze our financial department during this time of instability. And they're going to give us a report preliminarily next week on the things we could or should be doing, and how we dress this up to get the best result with the rating. But it is a risk. And the big risk is not the fact that we're downgraded, because we're not planning on going to the market. It increases the cost of the letter credit for our variable rate bonds. And last year, it went up significantly because we didn't have a choice. We were in the middle of negotiating to do the bonds, they said it's going to be an 8% increase in the letter credit. When I get the bill, it's 17%, and we don't have time to go out for bids. They only did it for two years, and the normal one is for three years. So if we get downgraded, our risk is that they could want to go to a one-year, et cetera. Now, to counter that, we'll be prepared to go out to bid, because we think it's a fairly...
So my question is that, I don't quite understand all these things, so again, I'd like to see a matrix where, what's our exposure? What are the potentials for this particular thing? Are we good for 2017, 2018, but not necessary for 2018, 2019? And if not, what's our exposure? That's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, we have, like I said, we have a two-year letter credit, which covers this year and next year. It's the year after that we would have the exposure. But we don't want to get downgraded. Again, it affects what we pay for a number of different things and rates, so our, the question is, in a service area like ours, given the, not just the demographics, but also the water demand situation and sales situation, creating financial stability at the level of that the finance people want, we're not going to be a A++ rated thing. That's simply not a realistic goal for us right now. That's why the rate study is important. I think if we can figure out a way to equitably stabilize our revenues and have agreement within our agencies, which is what we do with the rate study. We had all of our agencies agree on, yes, it was needed to do what we had to do. No protest out of 40 retail agencies when we did the rate study. That enabled us to do the bonds. And I think the same thing will happen here as we go through it, so... Anyway, a lot of work to do on the finance side. I think the capital program is a key part of that, and we'll be ready for that on May 4th, if that's the board's pleasure.
So just for the record, you'll do the capital improvement for the engineering committee, so we'll ensure that that's on the agenda over these...
Yes, yeah. And can we make that a full board meeting?
If it's at the pleasure of the board, if they want to do a board meeting.
Okay. That way, all the directors can participate, otherwise, someone would have to be silent. I don't think so. We can do that, you know, 9:30 to 10:30. Will that be enough time, 10 to 12, or should we start a little earlier?
Well, I thought you were going to take 45 minutes to finish it.
Well, 45, you got to warm up in that, say an hour.
Is the CIP specifically for a special meeting, and then you're also having your engineering committee with other items?
Yeah.
Initially, it would be one meeting.
One meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.